Thank you everyone for being here. Real quick, is Angie on? Angie, can you hear us? Are you here?
I am on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any recognitions for you to do beforehand?
I'll go first. I'll go first. Last one, if I can get stood up. Last month's bucket fillers, Liam Kyle, Casey Olmstead, Creed Madugal. Miss Sessions, entire class of first graders and Mrs. Schretz, entire class of first graders was all around there working on classroom and hallway behavior as a group and all that. And Virginia Ridgeberry. And in trying to promote a good place to be and student recognition, we only do bucket fillers. So got together with a small team of teachers and we've invented the new Pony Awards. And positive outstanding notable youth. It's for students who really just every day go about doing their business, taking care of business, being respectful, being polite. Just those kids that can sometimes fly into the radar, but they're always spot on academically and behaviorally. And the very first one this year went to Giovanna. And just a super, super great kid. And so we'll be getting one of those a week now moving forward. So that's all that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Also too.
So I have Students of the Week. This is from October course. So I had Riley Beatty, Aso Kano Farmer. And those two ladies had two nominations, so they got it twice. Cody Nice, who's no longer with us unfortunately, he moved. Kyle, Malia Highwalker, Carson Brucehead, same thing with him. Henry Sessions had two as well. Liam Wolfe, Jace Egan, Bernie Barr, Brian Crook, Bella Drexler, Tryston Eastman, Calvin Lee, Tamila Talawama, Kenny Brier, Ally Tarratt, Annie Kirchner, Landon Nightwalker. And then I had the sixth grader for Student of the Month for October was Aso Kano Farmer. The seventh grade student was Logan Skiles. And the eighth grade student was Henry Sessions. Thank you.
I have our October Student of the Month awards. Freshman Liliana Littleburn, sophomore Arthur Sweet, junior Addie Perton, senior Kira Lovato. And our Roseburg County Public Health Be a Buddy Not a Bully winner for October was Patrick Vieiras. And if this was a good recognition time, I'd like to recognize Mrs. McCray. Wednesday will be her last day with us and we will be doing dessert. Everyone's welcome during lunch on Wednesday.
All right. Thank you guys. Let's move on to 4.1 procedure. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the court or superintendent prior to meeting. Those comments will be brought to attention before, during the meeting. Any public participation?
Hi, Randy Watson. I just wanted to break on some of my kids really fast for fifth grade. I had seven students that participated in the Constitution Day poster contest. And we finally got the results back today. And unfortunately, we didn't have any of the finalist finalists. We did have, one of our kids got in the top 100 out of like a thousand. So that's pretty cool. So that was Aaliyah Colbert that got in the top 100. But I had Cory Davenport, Aaliyah Colbert, Aurora Yellowrow, Brittany Krieger, Rachel Petros, Violet Wolfe, and Evelyn Trilly who submitted stuff. So I just was gonna pass through and you guys can see their work. Proud of them. And that's it.
Anything else? Mr. Parker?
Hey, sir, there's gonna be speeches made. I don't want to interrupt, but I had a chance to watch the Phillies volleyball in Visio. And out of the last three or four years that I've had a chance to watch them, you guys, they were exciting. I mean, they knocked out perennial powerhouse, returning state champ, Huntley Project, not only just by a little bit. I mean, they, they lost a game which they tend to go, can I use the word brain dead producer a little bit sometimes? But boy, when they played, awesome. And I hope all of you are as proud as you could be because just outstanding growth and, and the pep and the cheerleaders, they just, everybody made it really exciting. While Huntley Project wasn't so excited. Anyway, just a shout out to the girls volleyball team.
Anything else? All right. Move on. 6.1. Consent agenda.
I move the Colstrip Public School Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. With that, I'll go to the vote. Angie?
Yes.
Serena?
Aye.
All right. Board calendar. You mentioned something, Scott. We should probably move the.
Parent teacher comments review?
Yeah.
To review that next one.
Since they're.
Since they're in November.
Yeah, this week.
So we can give you update.
Easy.
November or December.
Yeah, just move it. All right, with that, we'll move on to new business. Looks like you're at first two, Scott.
Okay. Got two recommendations here for classified employees. First one for district paraprofessionals, Paulette Urion.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Paulette Urion, district paraprofessional, for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Okay, yep. For the upcoming school year, current school year, another recommendation for classified position, this one for route bus driver, Robert One Bear.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Robert One Bear for route bus driver for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item?
I'd like to know if we could pay Mr. One Bear retroactively starting today. He volunteered to go on the routes today, get trained. And I thought maybe we could pay him for that if we're going to move forward with his employment.
Angie?
Do we need to amend the motion?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I will amend my motion to add retroactive pay starting today.
Second.
Okay, motions. Any public comment on that? Any further board?
Thank you.
Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Good, good.
Is that going to be three routes or two routes?
Two.
Two.
Okay. 8.2.
Yeah, that's some recommendations for extracurricular hires for the current seasons. First one is Morgan Clark, FBMS head girls basketball coach.
Do you want to take these or do you want to take these? Doesn't matter? Okay. That's fine.
Do you want to do the same thing that she's been?
She's been volunteering.
Yep.
We've had an opening last week or so. And she's taken the girls to a tournament or two.
Did we have an official resignation that went with this then?
Yeah.
She talked to me on the phone. She, we had a conversation. She said she was gonna drop off her stuff at the, back to the middle school, which she did on the day she called me. Last Monday or Tuesday, can't recall. I think it was Tuesday. And took that as a resignation. She hadn't showed up for practice or anything from it. But she told me on the phone call that she was going to resign.
She also didn't sign a contract.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Morgan Clark, FBMS head girls basketball coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public opinion on this agenda? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to recommend for this current season again, CHS head girls basketball coach, Jody Jensen.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Jody Jensen, CHS head girls basketball coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board?
I would like to say that I'm thrilled to see someone that's in district, who has been in our community and is investing in our girls. I'm excited to see him come aboard.
What's that? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Okay, I've got one more recommendation for the 25-26 season. CHS head boys basketball coach, Bill Parker.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees deny the motion for Bill Parker for CHS head boys basketball coach.
Second.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees deny the motion for Bill Parker for CHS head boys basketball coach.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public opinion on this agenda item?
First of all, would you repeat the motion, please?
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees deny, deny Bill Parker head boys basketball coach.
Well, first of all, I was honored to be nominated for the position by the superintendent and athletic director. They're the ones that you hired to use their professional judgment to run the program. I want to give you some history before you vote. And I also want to offer you the chance to ask me questions because I think it's really unfair to deny a position before you know a person at all. I came aboard because I was aware that, well, actually, somebody came to me and said, gee, have you noticed that nobody was hired at all? And I don't know if this was a month before the season opened. I don't know the exact date. But I said, ah, that's probably rumored, you know, like emails and gossip and Facebook and all those things. So I came to the school and I asked. And they said, no, that's true. No basketball coaches at all have been hired for Colstrip Public Schools this short before the season. So I went to the athletic director, the superintendent, and I told them that I was volunteer. That's the word I used, by the way, because I, I was not aware of who else had applied at that time because the school did not advertise that. So they asked me to apply. So I did. And I said, gee, I'll go wherever you ask me to go. Whether that's middle school, girls was open at the time, high school girls, or high school boys. At that time, I wasn't competing against anyone. I wasn't competing any, any local favorites or, or any family or anything like that because I simply was not told even who was the applicants. So I turned in all my stuff. I'm totally certified. I would open myself for questions, if you have questions. I would also say that I didn't come to renew my career at the Colstrip Schools. I came because it's a really good school. I came with my kids to do that. It's always had a proud athletic tradition. And I think we've, we've gone backwards a little bit on that. And I think we can correct that through the years. I would also say that even though I wasn't originally trying to restart my career, I'd be split on things that I'm not aware of. And I'd like to be aware of those things if I had any chance to defend myself. But you know, if this is a poker game, guys, I'll go all in. I'd replace my resume against any other candidate you've had in the last decade. Proven success. Not hearsay, not gee, I want to hope. I didn't come to compete against people. But at this late in the game, 10 days before, I would like to offer myself for questions. And I would like to also offer my coaching and professional resume and I'll compare it with anybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any questions?
Let's see your resume.
My stance is I'm gonna back our employees in our district. That's where I've always been for four years, and I'm not gonna back down now.
Thank you for being upfront and honest.
Absolutely.
If it were a debate, I'd say maybe the kids should go first, but I'm not gonna debate. Any other questions?
Has there been any discussion with any other parents?
This is John Lee.
Not at the meeting, John, no.
Yeah, I, I think they should have input because they, they got a lot invested in this.
Yep. We got, we got an email.
And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I received communication today from a couple different parents.
I received phone call and we all got that email.
I received phone calls and emails. Did you say you had someone else on it?
Yeah, Mallory Stinson on and then Joe and Deanna Egan on.
Okay.
Mallory, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I would just like to say I agree with Tiffany. So over the past four to five years, our program has seen a new head coach almost every season. The constant turnover has made it difficult for our players to experience consistent leadership or long-term program growth. Our student athletes are dedicated and talented and they deserve a coach who will invest in them for the long run and someone who is committed to building a strong, stable program rather than simply filling a position for a single year. Frequent coaching changes district player development, team chemistry, and overall morale. Stability and leadership would benefit the team tremendously. I believe there are better in-district options with more recent basketball coaching experience who would be a better fit for the position. And I personally do not feel the current, current recommendation is the right fit. So I just hope that the board will consider these concerns carefully and prioritize hiring a boys' coach who is ready to make a lasting commitment to our students and the success of the boys' basketball program. And I agree with Tiffany, maybe hiring somebody in, in our district to do so.
Thanks, Mallory.
Thank you, Mallory. Said you had another one?
Yeah, Joe and Deanna Egan. I'm not sure it's Joe or Deanna.
Go ahead, Deanna.
Maybe it's Joe.
Or Joe.
Use that hand raise button, but I don't see any activity right now.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Deanna.
I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. I wasn't, I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, a couple comments. First of all, in, in the past three years, we have often hired community members over Colstrip Schools employees. That has been more the pattern and the consistency by this board. And the fact that Mr. Parker's coming forward, who has multiple decades in education, and that we have struggled in the last couple of years putting a ethical person coaching in the boys' program. I just really encourage you that we put an ethical person in the boys' program. And I do know that Bill Parker is that. The head coach has a lot of leeway with where he places his assistants. And you have to give somebody with the years of experience that Bill Parker has to know which coach to place where and who to, you know, where to have him function. The man has years and years of experience, more than any of the other candidates that I know of. And I think that you need to consider putting our boys best in this first, which is put an ethical leader in that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to deny Bill Parker coaching of head boys' basketball and ask for public input. I might lessen the pressure a little bit. I ask administration, and maybe they can answer the question tonight, if one of the assistant coaches from last year was offered a contract. And the reason I ask that is I'm going, gosh, guys, I've heard that head coaches get to pick their assistants. But also, in the back of my mind, I'm going, if somebody was offered a contract, we should honor that. And, and if that's true, and that person were offered a contract, I would certainly pick that person as a, as an assistant coach. So I think that addresses your longevity in the program. I believe I said in my interview multiple times, I don't think I'm your longtime, long-term solution. But I have been involved in building programs, and especially in basketball, but overall in school athletics. I've been around many successful schools and I think I know how to do that. So if that releases the pressure a little bit and influences your vote, I certainly would be welcome to take any assistant coach from last year's basketball team. And, and I think they, they might be the future, but you guys get to decide that. In recent years, let's be honest with everybody, parents have had a huge input in the way that the programs operate here. And I think in some cases that's okay, but if it goes too far, you guys, it tears down the program. It tears down people that are working for you and trying to do their best. And I think the way to handle that is if a coach does something that you don't approve of, go talk with them, please. Be honest. But don't spread that to the student athletes and the, and the rest of the community. Even it's not, it's not a healthy plan for developing activities, programs. So did I say anything, Trent, that wasn't appropriate or? I mean, I know we've talked about points.
I would like to clarify that it's been past practice of this board that if an assistant was hired under a head coach, like in this situation, that assistant still got their job. This happened during wrestling as well, and we honored that assistant contract. So that is, that's in place. I think we've done that before as a board. I don't see us changing that. So as far as I'm concerned, Trent is already part of the program as the assistant coach.
And by the way, I agree with that too. Thank you. Because I think that's an honorable way to handle it.
Okay. Anybody else have it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further board?
I think this position gets scrutinized so much. And if you, whoever gets in this job is going to have their life put under a microscope. Your neighbors from 30 years ago will be called and then it will be posted on Facebook. And, I mean, we have some very good investigators in our district.
We do.
And they will, they will do a great job.
Put you under a microscope and they will make sure that everyone knows exactly what you've done every minute of every day of your life for the last 30 years. So whoever gets the job needs to be prepared for that. Because it can be very taxing.
What's that? On the motion to deny, I'll move to the vote. Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
No. Motion doesn't pass.
Want me to go, just next to him, slow or?
We'll pick the head coach by himself. I think we can take the assistants together.
By himself.
And then we'll take the heads. Yeah, by themselves.
All right, you recommending for the 25-26? Yes, sorry. Spring head coaches for the upcoming, this current school year, Chris Oswald head track coach.
FBMS.
FBMS.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Chris Oswald, 25-26 head track coach.
Second.
Did I say FBMS? FBMS.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to recommend three assistant coaches for the current school year. FBMS, spring assistant coach hires, rehires, Jeanette Oswald, assistant track coach, Angie Courier, assistant track coach, Brian Blanchard, assistant track coach.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves FBMS, spring assistant coach rehires, Jeanette Oswald, Angie Courier, Brian Blanchard for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
High school head coaches.
All right. Colstrip High School, spring head coach rehire, first recommendation for the current school year, Sherrell Martin, head track coach.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Sherrell Martin, head track coach, CHS head track coach for the 25.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any board? Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
And then assistants. You got one golf and then take the track. Just do them all.
Okay. All right, Colstrip High School, spring head, I'm sorry. Yeah, the head coach rehires Sherrell Martin, head track coach.
No. You had the wrong word. I did.
Robert Whitehead, head golf coach, yeah.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the rehire of Robert Whitehead, CHS head golf coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Okay, with that, Angie?
Aye.
Serena?
Aye.
Now you can take all assistants.
Too long, yeah. Okay, CHS, spring assistant coach rehire. Okay, CHS spring assistant coach rehires for the 25, 26 school year. Recommending Sabal Kersman, assistant golf coach. Vanya Big Left Hand, assistant track coach. And Brian Sullivan, assistant track coach.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the extracurricular rehires of Sabal Kersman, assistant golf coach. Vanya Big Left Hand, assistant track coach. Brian Sullivan, assistant track coach for CHS for the 25, 26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any board? Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
All right. What's that? Move on to 8.04. Evan?
Before you, there's two proposals for a new printer service contract, for a five-year contract. Our current print service contract, as I understand, is expiring in five days after a five-year term. So we have two proposals before you, one from our current provider, Dex Imaging, and another provider in our area, Kelly Create. And if you do have questions for the representatives, if you have both representatives from Dex and from Kelly Create in the audience.
I'll be honest, I looked over them a little bit. You're the expert in this. What do you want to do? I hate to put you down the spot, but I mean, you're the one that's got to deal with this, not us.
Well, both companies have experience in the area. They're two new names business-wise, but the technicians and the service people are local in Montana and have serviced our area. And actually, both groups of technicians have, under different names, serviced our school in past years. It does come down to the big items being price. And that's something I wanted to have you guys look at, because it's a monthly term based on cost per page. It would be a fixed lease rate for the equipment, and then our variable rate is cost per page. We pay one thing for black and white prints, and another price for colored prints. So that can fluctuate depending on how many staff members are going to use black and white, and possibly even print at the larger printer, because that's. But it makes a difference with the amount of printing that we do. Now, just for transparency, what you have in board docs, you have the quote that I received, the district received from Kelly Create and Dex. And the Dex sales team had asked if it was possible to offer an additional or a lowering of their bid. So that's not in the documents you have. I just told them that they could come to the meeting with those documents, but it would be up to the board if that was possible to create or to offer. I don't know, price-wise, I think we'll get good prices and good service from both teams. In this process, I have appreciated the customer service attitude with Kelly Create. It kind of fits more in line with my vision of customer service. I know both companies will provide good service, but that would be my leaning out of, if you look at the cost and still have questions, to lean more a little bit on the customer service approach that I've received from Kelly Create during this process. But in the end, it comes down to the monthly price. It's a five-year term. A lot of things can change in the five years. And the price is going to be the thing that stays consistent.
May I ask if it would be appropriate if I introduce who Kelly Create is? Would you guys give them a text five years now, so that they know who we are?
It would be, it's fine. We met Dex representative last meeting, so yes. Please come to the party and tell us who you are.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My name is Bob Scott, senior executive at Kelly Create and Billings. I have been in this business for 38 years. We were a company called J&amp;H Office Equipment some time ago. In 2020, we sold to Kelly Create. Kelly Create is a company that is headquartered in Kent, Washington. It's not a corporation. It's one man, Eric Mannion, who came from this industry, bought this company and has built it. And when that happened, I was somewhat concerned. Been with this company a long time, and we were really like family. And I found with Kelly Create and Eric, a place where there are people who understand, they come from the business, they have an attitude. I was able to put this proposal together because Eric gave him the opportunity to use numbers that we wouldn't normally be able to use. He really wanted this to be possible. And his vision is that every one of our customers are partners, and we're going to do everything we can to make this initial happen possible. And that we have to carry on service. Make sure that the customer is well taken care of for as long as we're a customer. Hopefully, that's a long, long time. We are all over Washington, Oregon, Montana, Alaska. We have 40-ish locations. And so the way we work is, is obviously, we know we have this equipment in place, and we need service and supply items local. Sometimes that isn't the case. And so every other office is a backup. We get things directly sent in. The idea is to keep you up as much as possible and keep you down as short-term as possible. And so I've been really happy with Kelly Create. Kelly is not just a copier company. We do technology of all kinds. And we help many organizations do a lot more than printing. But printing is kind of the foundational piece of a company like ours. And so I believe in a company a lot. Another differentiation really is we're local to you as people. And so my understanding in the Dex world is that you really are supposed to call Florida to get anything done, and then they send it out here. In our case, you have my cell number, you have our service manager's cell number, you have our Montana service manager's cell number. And you can call and talk to anybody you want to and get the service you're looking for. If there's a ball dropped, we take care of it. Any large company has cracks, and things fall through cracks. In our case, we try to eliminate that by not having you talk to people in Kent, Washington, but talking to people here in Montana. And they know the importance of an organization like this to a company like ours. We're extremely important. And so we do everything we possibly can. So that's the story, really how we came to be part of Kelly Create and what Kelly Create is about. It's something that's pretty proud, really. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Can I clarify? I think we're, from Evan.
You gotta come up here and. Make your presence known.
Eric, I'm secretary of all the things. For Evan, I guess, if we were to change companies, would all of our equipment change?
Yes, this would be a total replacement. They have 11 large RICO machines. One company, Kelly Create offers the RICO model. Dex offers a Sharp model, but they say it's comparable in terms of features and speed and all that. And then the classroom printers will be updated to a newer model of the HP brand. So everything would be 11 large RICO machines, six of the classroom.
Wouldn't that be like a slow process, or like one day we can add?
Well, that's part of the proposal after whoever's decided. There would be a little bit of waiting time, maybe anywhere from three to six weeks, depending on the company that's offering it. I would like to do that as fast as we can, but it would still be a staggered roll out. Like maybe, you know, one day, all the offices are upgraded, and then the classroom printers are worked out. But that would be a part of the scheduling once a provider is selected. But both providers would come in and do a massive redo, and hopefully before December. But we would just work with the buildings and find out what's the best way to swap it out.
So that would be my only concern, is trying to swap everything out, if it works or doesn't work, or, you know. But we rely on technology a lot. And it suddenly we no longer have printer scan and copier options. That's kind of detrimental.
Right.
Would Christmas break be an option?
Yeah, it certainly could be. Yeah, this would not be on a Friday morning, everything gets swapped out. It'd have to be Saturday to make sure things work. And both companies have offered to do as least disruption as possible to configure the machines so that when a new machine comes in, it's the same name, it's the same networking address, so that on your computer, you click the same button and it prints. Now, obviously, there will be some pickups in that, but we have enough of our printer fleet documented. I have all the information that I can send to both companies, and they would do a straight transfer and it would be an in-place replacement. And that is the goal, knowing that it's a big disruption for the middle of the year.
Either way, it's going to be a disruption.
Yeah, either way, any company becoming a disruption.
Remember when Evan first started and nobody could print? And you fixed all that? So, I mean, we've come a long way that we're like.
I don't remember that. Came on and for my classroom, I had to call tech every time I wanted to print.
Yeah, yeah, none of the printers were working.
Can I tell them what you did today? I asked a computer genius in downstairs, and teachers kept saying that Jericho Garden was showing, what is it?
Waiting for activity.
Activity, right. And they couldn't see anything, and they knew these kids on the computer. Well, the little darlings figured out how to download their games, save them, and open them up on their Chromebook. Teachers couldn't see what they were doing, but they were able to play. So they sent me a whole list, and I called them all down, and we chatted.
He's a long list. Yeah, they were smart kids that taught me something. We were tracking that ghost for a while.
Called a kid.
Mrs. Murlock's up upstairs. She confiscated one, and I was able to look at it and say, oh, now I know how they're doing it. Okay.
Anyway, I appreciate the fact that you were always on top of that.
Head tech winner.
Did you want to present your other quote?
Yes, I would. So I do have some pamphlets here that you can hand out. Like Devin said, he was gracious enough to allow us to rebid. A little bit more of a formal look, as you can probably tell. But definitely adjusted prices, adjusted rates. By the end of it, you know, using the same usage and everything as Kelly Create was, we were able to lower your guys' overall monthly payment by enough that you'll be saving about $10,000 per year with faster equipment. Evan did say there is a bit of a learning curve. You know, we are committed to designating a technician for your guys' school, you know. So you have one technician who understands your guys' workflow, understands the problems each machine is having. Along with that proposal is the performance guarantee, which states, you know, in writing that if you guys are having issues with a machine, it's a complete lemon. In the first two years, we'll replace it with something brand new. No cost to you, and then for your guys' trouble, $1,000 credit. So, yeah, in my proposal, I just wanted to put out our SLA, Service Level Agreements, to better suit your guys' school. I know you guys kind of feel a bit remote out here, away from Billings or wherever. You know, we are going to offer that realistic four-hour phone call, see what we can do. If not, we're going to have a technician on-site within 24, at least 24. But, you know, severity of an issue requires a tech to be out sooner. Just like Kelly Create, we will offer, you know, emails, phone numbers, service manager, myself, anyone you need in Billings to get you helped out as fast as possible. Another part of this proposal is, there is one like machine for all the big copiers, one like machine for all the black and white printers, one like machine for all the color printers. So a lot less tone skews that we're working with. So it's easy to have that set on hand at each school, and never go down without a partner. But thank you guys for taking this revised proposal. I hope this shows you guys what Dex is willing to do to keep you guys as a customer. We do value you guys and we'd love to retain you. And if there's anything more that we can do, please let me know.
I gotta be honest with you.
Yes.
I've been in the schools before volunteering, and they've had people come out. And that, I have been less than impressed with customer service from Dex. I'm here to tell you. I agree with Evan. It is a nightmare, to say the least.
I agree. Yes. The merger with the 360 Office Solutions, moving to Dex, you know, happens like a flip of the switch. Dex, large they are, they are the largest independent dealer in the nation. But they don't know how Montana works. And so it takes time to get through those growing pains, and then a fit will work for us. And what has worked for us is you guys having that reliable customer service here.
Yeah.
With me and my technicians and my service manager, my warehouse manager who handles all ordering. You know, that is, until they bring our call center back into Montana, that is what we're working with, and it's helped a lot of our major accounts.
Can I ask this part that you pressed off?
Yes, that was just leasing information, like buyout after reviewing the original hometown lease for your guys' copiers. You know, it's stated in there that you guys don't owe that amount, unless you're wanting to own it, which is not the case.
Okay.
So that's why I took that out of the bargain.
Okay, thank you.
But either way, you guys choose, you know, I'm happy to still support you guys if you guys need anything. But yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Evan, it's up to you, but I gotta, I gotta agree with you. I've been in the schools when they've had printers go down, and it's like pulling teeth.
Well, I hate this part of it because I've worked with both, all the technicians. I mean, we've been like a plant, we've been here. One of the technicians at Kelly Create is a former technician that was out here under different companies. I have a great relationship with him. Same goes for Dex. And I hate this, because I don't mean disrespect to Trevor or the other local guys, but as Trevor indicated, as you're spotting, we did see a, what I thought was a significant customer service drop. And 360 Office Solutions changed Dex. So you went from a local Montana company, similar to what Kelly Create is, a little bit more like that, to a large corporation based in Florida, and we saw weeks to get a printer repaired.
Right.
Not because of the local team, but because of the corporate model that
Right.
got messed up in Montana, not realizing that we're far away from a city to get. So my gut feeling on that would say, start fresh with a team with Kelly Create, and I'm feeling a little bit more of that local Eastern Montana vision. Not against the local technicians, but just the corporate view.
Right.
But price-wise, I mean, Dex is a larger company. But I think this customer service side is going to be a big part of it, even though we could save money with a larger corporation. So that's a tough call.
It's not that much money.
Honestly, when I was at Printdue volunteering last year, and it was like every week I'd go in and the printer was still not done and still not done, it's like, we gotta do something. I move the Colstrip Public, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, if I can put in one more piece.
I think we're ready. I think we're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves five-year contract lease agreement with Kelly Creates for copiers and printers as presented.
Second.
Okay, more to a second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Of course. Thank you.
Devin, do you default to black and white? Mine is defaulted to black and white, and I have to choose color if I want to print color.
Yes, I have. Yes, I have our printing system to do that. And I think there's a lot of just training that we need to do for the team. Because it wasn't until, I don't know, sometime into last year that I realized we were paying per cost and that we could default. And some classrooms were printing all in color and I doubt they were actually printing a color document.
Right.
But because it defaulted to that color module, we paid more per print. So, and I haven't done any real training or communication with that to the staff. But starting with a fresh contract, it's the more we can do at the large machines and the more we can do black and white will save overall costs. And my team can help fix that to make it default.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you, Evan. Eight point oh five.
Hello, Brandy Watson from CFA. It's already that time again. I know, we came up fast again. We'd like to open negotiations between CFA and our board. The whole point of bringing it up now is of course so that we can give the training for the interest-based bargaining again and then really get that set in motion so that we can come to an agreement before that hiring season really hits hard and be able to both retain and also recruit as many as we can for the teachers. So just like to open it up.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the CFA's letter of intent to negotiate a future contract with the district.
Okay, more than a second. Any public comment on this?
If you have one online from Joe and/or Deanne, you can.
On CFA negotiation?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hey, Steve, yeah, this is Deanne.
You threw me there.
I saw that, sorry. Got you awake anyway. I just wanted to read something that you worked on a few years ago from Article Nine, Section Four. Given that the situation with coaching has been that most of our hires are not certified staff. And if you look at the history of the successful programs that we've had, it's mostly been community members. So Section Four reads, so you might want to change this. "The administration and the school board will make an attempt to fill the positions in Exhibit B with certified personnel. The superintendent or his or her designated will have the option of rejecting any or all applicants after reviewing the training experience of the applicant. This determination is subject to all applicants. If any extracurricular position either currently established or added in the future or if there is a resignation during the contract year and the position is not filled by certified personnel, non-certified personnel may be hired." So in the past, this has not been followed very closely. As most of our hires have been non-certified. Thankfully, this year, the girls' basketball coach is a certified staff person. That's wonderful. But this has not been consistently followed. And so if you're going to keep it there, then I just encourage you that as you go forward that you try to uphold that. And if you're not going to, then maybe just remove it. So just a thought.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And then I have two things.
Ms. Moore, go ahead.
First one, I realize that you're not negotiating right now, so it's not really relevant. But non-certified would not, or you're talking about certified versus certified. Like Trent would not be certified, so he would not be considered in that language. So maybe you change it, so just something to consider. And then just coming from, as the CFA past president, I will say that that IBV training is meant for everybody who's negotiating, not just her team. It's meant for her team and the superintendent and anybody else that's sitting at that table to get together and learn to work together with those silly little stories that Max brings in and you have to talk about all of your different things and stuff. And it just really helps when to like build your rapport at the beginning and make things a little smoother when you go into it if everybody's been together prior to negotiations. So just something to consider before you start.
Thank you. Anything else? Any board?
Do we have to decide who's gonna do it?
Not yet.
You guys have time, we just need you to accept.
Okay.
Negotiations with us.
Okay.
So, yeah. All right, with that, Angie?
Are we just voting to?
Accept.
Stay with the vote. Just aye.
Just to negotiate.
Otherwise, it can be really awkward.
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Aye. Eight point oh six.
So we had our bond election, went really well. Yes, we're so excited. I kind of just made a little bit of notes. It's back there for you guys to look at. Steve is the only one that needs to sign this one. But all of it's back there for you guys to kind of look at and see how that looked to us. But we had a 48% turnout and we only had six fewer votes than the trustee and levy election, which was really surprising to me. So I want to give thanks to our central office. They helped stamp ballots and even last-minute stickers with the birthdates that needed to be added. I kind of said, okay, stop everything, everyone, all hands on deck, get in here. We are putting more stickers on these ballots. So I really appreciate our central office for pulling together. And then Chris McManus, Patty Dunn and Linda Myers for being our accounting judges. It was another really smooth election to where we're like, what did we do wrong? Because they're always so smooth and that's just because of the teamwork, so. And then I wanted to give you guys some, kind of just some information on the bond, just a little bit. There's a 60-day window for voters to contest the election, which would be December 21st. So the earliest we would have a bond offering and lock the rates would be mid to late January. January, sorry. Bridgette, DA Davidson, that you guys have met. She's put together a financing time schedule that she plans to present at the next board meeting on the 24th, as she plans to come to do that in person. And then we also need to create a committee that will consist of the business manager, superintendent, board chairman and one other board member. So you guys may want to start discussing that a little bit. There will be meetings. Board meetings will be included to have bond discussions up until that date. And then there will be other meetings with the two board members that are chosen. So it is a little bit of a commitment to be on that committee. I kind of looked at the meetings and they looked like they were scheduled for maybe an hour, hour and a half. But her preliminary timeline shows that we could potentially close on the bond on February 18th and receive the proceeds to invest during constructions and then the investment earnings can be used on the project. So I'm gonna give you a timeline, but yes, we're pretty excited that all went well, so.
There is no question.
Thank you, board, for all the work you guys did too. That was great, great communication.
Did you have a lot of trouble with people filling out the sticker?
Yeah.
I had maybe 10. I think it helped to kind of give out the information online ahead of time. And then there were some people that just we couldn't ever get a hold of. You know, by the time you do your voter registration, if you guys haven't updated that with the county, you should, because when something is wrong with it, I have to call them and get phone numbers or things like that. And sometimes, most of the numbers I would call would be disconnected because they're just, you know, you don't think to update that kind of stuff. So we do our best, we mail letters to them, we call Facebook stocks and people, trying to get people to come back in and get those filled out, so. And then we, you know, attacked everyone that tried to drop it in the box and I'm like, is your birthday around there? We all did and they're like, yeah, I follow directions. And I'm like, okay, just checking. So we were trying to be very vigilant about the ones getting dropped off, so.
I had to be reminded.
You didn't say thank you to Macy.
Oh, sorry, thank you Macy for stuffing letters for us.
She did come in and.
She did the pre-liter.
Yep, she did.
To the taxpayers, yep.
We all thank her from central office.
That was a lot.
Thank you, Brittany, good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees of Colstrip School District 19 approve the October 21st, 2025 elementary and high school bond election results as presented.
Second.
Okay, more than a second, any public comment on this? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Good job.
So proud of us.
A lot of work to be done.
So proud of our community, so excited.
It's gonna be good. Okay. With that, moving to reports.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Bailey and to Mrs. O'Toole, I love the statistics on your reports, like the data, loved it.
Thank you.
It's great.
Do you have any, any questions? Derek is.
He's sick today.
Yeah.
He gave me some of the overall numbers, organized.
Yeah.
Not broken down by grade, but we all.
So we had how many total transferred out because of busing?
I asked Chris today, but she didn't know. But I don't know, they had reports from the school though.
14 for CHS.
Seven for Purdue.
Seven for Purdue.
10 at the middle.
10.
31, I guess 30, I talked to Steve.
How many at Purdue?
Seven.
31. I was close, it was 1-0.
Yeah.
You keep the trap along the way.
The nice thing is that we got some bus drivers hired, finally.
Yes.
Yay, that's right. I feel bad for my school today, but just we sold from them too, so.
What's that?
I said, I'm glad we got you. I feel bad for where you came from. But we definitely need it, so perfect. Jen, did you have anything you need to add?
I just wanted to shout out for the early childhood screening or Child Find. I changed up my flyer because it's was construed for people that read a child find. They already know who my child is. And then I'd like to thank the Frank Breton Middle School staff for letting me use their building and helping the families find the library. The DEEP staff, they actually sent two people to come do screenings with children birthed to age three. And that was Jenny Grule and Pam Ash. And then they also did the vision screening. It's actually pretty cool. They have a machine that they just stand there and smile and they just look at the kids' eyes and it tells them pass or if they need to be rechecked. So pretty awesome for that. Sue Roller comes, she's our state audiologist and she comes and helps with the screenings. And then Emily Marion, Tammy Willheim, Whitney Drazan, Ann Schindler helped as well. And then Jess Stillworth, the speech and language pathologist, she came and helped as well. So I can't run it without everyone doing their part. And then do you want me to go over my report since it's attached for the Child Finder, early childhood screening? So we were able to see 10 kids. One kid was referred for a complete eye exam. And then one kid for further hearing testing and six students were referred for further testing. So I guess there's job security, so the short of it.
Okay, thank you. What's that? Ms. Drew?
All right, besides, a lot of which have been here, there's been tons of work with the bond in our office, with bus drivers. Rich and I have got to know each other extremely well, lots of putting pieces together, bus drivers, coaches, kind of non-stop this last month, working on those things. But as extremely, last month I said I would give you a little more information on this program, Capturing Kids' Hearts, that I learned about at the State SAM meeting for school administrators in Montana. And it was incredible. I brought one of the best teams I've ever traveled with and I've been, over my years, many, many, many conferences and we had a fabulous team. They encouraged us to bring teachers. I brought Tashelle Remire, first of all, she goes to all schools, works with all teachers. So she's kind of instrumental to help us once we get this going, put the pieces in place. Brandy was, Brandy Watson was with us. We had Tara Lyon come with us, Malicia Segal, so teachers from each building. I know Jen really wanted to come, she had her, the presenter at State SAM too. And so brought her along to work with the special ed team. And I know she put things in place right away since she got back. And then also Rich is with us because this carries over into athletics, into athletic programs, all our activities. So, see, did I miss somebody? I missed somebody. Derek, Derek, it's a curriculum. We actually got the first book at the conference. And then we had a follow-up meeting with the rep here a couple of weeks ago. Part of the team was there. And so I'm gonna be getting the principals, those books. She said she had given to us, but we can't tell anybody. So somebody from Capturing Kids' Hearts that's listening probably shouldn't. But I just don't want to give them to us twice because when we get the training, which I'm gonna be asking for soon, then I'll get those anyway. But I want to give them to the principals sooner. So this is called a flagship of training. It's the free training and it was two days, two solid days, two totally engaging days of us really doing what the kids would do in their classroom and what teachers would do. And so we interacted with 11 school districts that were there in Montana, Bullsmun. So I threw some numbers in here too, because we'll be getting into later on exactly how the program works. I'd rather have you hear from some of the people that went when we bring a proposal to you because there is a cost over a five-year period to bring this in. But I pretty much think it's instrumental to what we're trying to do here in our schools and athletic programs. So the first one is, you'll notice 22% reduction in discipline referrals. So everybody always wants to see that improved. This is nationwide. I didn't throw some of the numbers in there that I found, researched, but they have. I think they said they're on 35,000 campuses in the United States. They show 40% growth in students' pro-social skills, 70% higher student connection than the national average, connecting with schools. We know how important that is, so schools right along with what we're talking about doing or trying to do with our safety program. 97% of participants would recommend or train to a colleague. You don't get that, that often. We go to something, you know, it's mixed. Usually that part was good, part of it wasn't. This was good. I know we had conversations around lunch, dinner tables, constantly about what was going on in our training and everybody loved it. 18% higher teacher retention rate than the national average. Another thing that we're really trying to improve here in Colstrip is retaining teachers. 11% increase in standardized test scores. We know where you're working on improving achievement. 96% of our educators plan to apply what they learned in Capturing Kids' Hearts training on the first day back and that happened here. I heard those stories about people that were excited in what they were doing. Jen was one, that she did some stuff in her own IEP meetings. I heard about Malicia the first day getting the social contract in place. I know Tara, when she implemented, she said she could tell right away, culture of her classroom, behaviors, things improved. So it just, it was really cool. I was in Brandy's class, saw hers, her social contract, right after she did it the first day that she had a chance to do that. So they're really getting into this already, modeling for the teachers what it is that we want to do. And just some more good stuff for your last couple, spare you there, but. So again, all four, and then I'll throw Jen in, five people implemented right away. So it wasn't one of those things that, oh, we gotta wait, can't do it. But it is a full, to implement our district, district-wide, we need to train our whole district. So I'm working with Rose right now. We have another meeting set for September or November 17th. And Radis is working on going in with us to help share costs and expenses for those kind of, those trainings. So I'll be getting that together with you and some of our team at least. Another big thing, I know we've been working on the four-day-a-week calendar, this last one. We had members bring back information that they had researched. And then out of that, we had quite a bit of different fact findings. So now I've actually got, I think, three of the surveys about ready to go out. We want to send out surveys. So we're going to be surveying community, surveying classified employees and certified employees as well as the students. So I'm almost done with those. I missed a lot of work last week. I was pretty ill, so I wasn't able to get, get these finished, I was hoping to before today, actually before that next last week. And then another thing that we talked about as admin team is having me go to student councils and work on getting input from them and then eventually others too, like I just mentioned, surveying them for a new model for our district, just kind of who we are. And I have one really good slogan from, from a high school meeting that I attended for their student council. It's kind of neat because I met with them, you know, their high school kids were here for kind of, you know, advisory and joking around a little bit, having some fun and nobody really had anything and then. And then five minutes later, I stayed there in the commons and a couple of kids talked to me here and there. And one came right back to me and gave me a really good slogan because she'd gone back to her class, thought about it, wrote some things down and came back. So I was pretty impressed. And I always have been thinking about our kids, just being really impressed. People going around our schools, they would see what I'm talking about, how well behaved. Just got some really, really good kids, real proud of them. So that was, that was pretty neat. That was a real highlight for me, I guess, just that one little thing. And that kid that really took it to heart and came back, you know, and shared with me what they thought would represent our school district really well. So lots of other things going on, but those are the main highlights.
Do you want to update us anymore?
It's not the buses already.
Is it?
Okay. Perfect. Quickly, anything else? Thank you all. Rich, what do you need from me?
Need lots from you.
Lots?
Yeah.